Today is Monday, December fourteenth. And this, thank God, is the last meeting of 2020 for this board. And this meeting's called to order at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask that you put your electronic devices in airplane mode or turn them off so it doesn't interfere with our equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for those in attendance to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward, one at a time, give us time in between to disinfect the podium, and please direct all your comments to the board. Keeping with COVID restrictions, we have two board members that are going to be on the phone. They will be active participants in this meeting, and they will be voting for these items tonight. We also, I believe, have at least one citizen that will be calling in on the phone. So you guys, if you will bear with us, we'll get through it. It takes a couple extra minutes, but we'll do the best we can. And if I didn't say so already, please sign the sign-in sheet at the podium when you come up and make your comments. All right. The first item on the agenda has been withdrawn. This is item 2020-468. That was Z20-014. Can I get a motion to withdraw this application? Motion, Mr. Seagrave, second. Mr. Smith. All in favor?
There's a motion to table the request, or to withdraw the request. Do you...
Yeah.
Okay, that item has been withdrawn. Seven, zero. Sorry. All right. The next item on our agenda is item 2020-519. This is a plat approval for the subdivision of one lot into two lots at land lot 334. This is 3.86 acres of North Cooper Lake Road. Benchmark Homes is the applicant. Mr. Staub's gonna get the background, please.
Good evening. Joey Staub's, Planner II with Community Development. This is a plat approval on North Cooper Lake Road by Benchmark Homes. This will be heard by Mayor and Council on next Monday. It's a pretty simple request. It's about a four-acre piece of property, zoned R15. Everything around it is R15. Applicant is wanting to subdivide this into two lots. They'll both be just under two acres each. So it'll be subdivided like this. It'll have the R15 setbacks, front of 40 feet, side of 10, rear of 30. And there's a stream buffer in the back that'll be left undisturbed. So Community Development has reviewed the request, and it meets all of the R15 zoning district regulations, and therefore we recommend approval.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Staub's? Victor, do we have any questions on the phone, guys? No questions? God, help us. I'm sorry. No questions from Mr. Bentley or... All right. So at this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application, please. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, how are y'all?
Doing well.
Scott Justice with Benchmark Homes. We've held this property for quite a while and entertained, maybe trying to do a larger subdivision, but we've come to the conclusion the best thing was just to split it into two lots, just build a single-family home on each one. And that's what we're proposing to do. So answering any questions y'all may have?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I do have one question. Nobody else has any. Where's the sewer? How are you doing the sewer on this property?
They're gonna be septic.
They are gonna be septic?
Yeah.
Which has been the problem with this property from day one, right?
About 18 years we've owned it.
Well, glad to see you guys finally, hopefully, get something done with it.
Time to do something.
Absolutely. All right. Is there... At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? All right, let the record show, there's no one in attendance. Are there any questions from Mr. Bentley or Mr. Jones on the phone for the applicant?
None, none for me. None for me.
All right. Now, thank you very much. Anybody in attendance? No one's coming forward, so at this time, we'd like to entertain a motion. We have a motion for Mr. Smith to approve. We have a second. Mr. Bartlett? All in favor, please vote. Okay, we got five up here on the phone.
Keith, there's a motion to approve.
Yeah, I vote to approve.
Victor, there's a motion to approve.
Vote to approve.
All right, your application's been approved, seven, zero. Good luck with your project. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 2020-520. This is a plat approval with variances. Variance case V20-073. It's a subdivision of two lots into four lots for four single-family homes, detached homes, land lot 485. This is 1.8 acres at 3278 and 3288, King Springs Road. PM Builders LLC is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background.
Thank you. This is a plat approval like the previous request, although there's two variances involved with this request. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council next Monday. Actually, it's on 3278 and 3288, King Springs. It's two single-family lots that will be subdivided into four lots. Stay R15. This is the existing lot configuration, and the proposed lot is subdivide each lot into It will have the following setbacks: front setback of 40 feet, side setback of five feet, and a rear setback of 30 feet. They'll maintain 15 feet between each structure. It'll have a common drive with rear access garages for each lot. This will help the appeal from the King Springs Road and help with site distance issues on King Springs. This also helps. We're more comfortable with this lot configuration rather than running a road in the back with the cul-de-sac to where the majority of the property would be... had land disturbance, and this really consolidates the construction on the front third of the So as mentioned, there's two variances requested. Lot width from 85 feet to 50 feet, and side setback reduction from 10 feet to five feet. Pictures of the subject property and adjacent properties. Community Development recommends approval of the request for the development of four single-family homes at a density of 2.22 units per acre with the following conditions: one, regarding the setbacks, as I mentioned, front of 40 feet, side of 5 feet, rear of 30 feet; two, minimum lot width of 50 feet; three, a site distance analysis will be provided for the driveway; four, the homes will be rear entry homes; five, more than 5,000 square feet of impervious surface will require stormwater management; and six, it will be conditioned to this site plan submitted with the application. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Keith, Victor, you guys have any questions for Mr. Staub's?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
The 5,000 feet of impervious, is that per lot or is that for the development?
That's for the development.
I do have one question. Joey, what is the mechanism within the ordinance or within the proposed plat that keeps these houses up on the front third? Is it based on site plan, and y'all, everything's pinned to the site plan?
That's exactly right.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Staub's. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about Good evening and welcome.
Hello, Joel. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Brad Thompson. Corporate address 530 Ridgewater Drive, Marietta, Georgia. The application is real simple. This is something we've done several times before in the last couple of years. We're trying to basically improve what's there. I mean, the houses that are existing on the lots right now are deteriorating, and we hope to build four new homes, modern farmhouse style with rear entry garages. And the new design, or the design with the shared driveway, will allow us to preserve more trees in the front yard. I know the setbacks that David, they basically have stayed at 40 feet on the front. We're probably gonna push these houses back a little bit further. Probably, the existing houses are about 50 feet, and that's probably where we'll put our houses, right at about where the existing houses are. These houses will be about 3,000 square feet in size, maybe higher, probably not lower. And they should market in the high 500s. We have did something very similar to this over on Church Street, and it went very well and was very successful. I haven't heard anything negative about it, so I think this is all very similar to what we've done in the past. I'll reserve the rest of my time for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Bentley, Mr. Jones, any questions?
This is Keith Bentley. I just had one question for clarification. Did you say the architecture was gonna be modern farmhouse?
Yes, I did. I mean, basically, it's what we've been doing, just kind of a board and batten with look on the front with accents of shingles, siding, some brick.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come to the mic. Did you just raise your hand? Did you want to speak? Yeah.
Just expect me more neighbors.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They said they'd come. Hi, I'm Amy Thompson. I live at 3258 King Springs Road.
Good evening and welcome, Ms. Thompson.
Oh, thank you. Good to be here. Most of us in our neighborhood don't mind change, if it respects the neighborhood that we have. Driving down King Springs are a number of beautiful homes, but you blink and you miss one. They're packed in like sardines as it is. Now, thanks to the pandemic and the increase in online ordering, if you happen to be behind a delivery truck going down King Springs, you have ample time to check out every one of those homes. You're also awakened by the constant horn honking, ambulances trying to get around congestion. It's effectively a thoroughfare between Concord, Atlanta Road, and South Cobb. I moved into my home in 2005. It's 75 years old, I'm proud to say. I hated that home. I loved the property. I wanted to flip it. I didn't have the funds, so I didn't. In between myself and Concord Road were five homes. Now there are 11. All of us sharing the same sewer system, the same cable, the same telecom fiber, the same street. Traffic has increased. Mailbox looting has increased. Break-ins have increased. Now, according to the residential construction industry, there are as many pluses to the congested new way of living: walkable communities, affordable lifestyles near urban amenities. I agree. It reduces urban sprawl, I agree. It also has been said to promote social interaction. Here's my problem: it doesn't. Let's look at the cons. Residential owners and residents often clash because they hold opposing interests and goals. Close proximity exposes residents to a loss of privacy, increased nuisances, bright lights, noise, and if you don't have the same quality of life as your neighbor, you hate each other. Parking, congested. With smaller homes like mine, when you're putting in two- and three-story monsters, we lose light. You can't give us that back. The subject property is 1.8 acres. The request is to split two lots into four parcels. The distance between one home and the next, I have on my notes, is 15 feet. The average automobile is 15 feet. Do people really want to live one car length from each other? Maybe they're doing it successfully, but that's not what the statistics are showing. In June 2019, Redfin surveyed over 3,000 US residents who bought or sold a primary residence in the last year or plan to in the next 12 months. These were the results. Home buyers and sellers are nearly twice as likely to oppose the building of dense housing in their neighborhood than they are to support it. 53% of them support zoning policies that limit housing density near where they live. The result by home buyers and sellers in every income bracket were far more likely to oppose density than to support it. By race, by race, the highest-earning minority respondents, those earning $200,000 or more, are more likely to oppose density than to favor it, with 54% opposing and 34% supporting density in their neighborhood. Let's go back to the issue of trying to make a community. You know, I come from a small town, a farm town in Alabama. We don't even have a grocery store. I moved here 30 years ago, and I absolutely love it, and I'm always bragging about how the city of Smyrna has done such an amazing job dealing with the growth, this incredible growth you guys have had. And you have. But let's go back to community. 3399 King Springs Road Southeast was sold twice in the last 20 years. That's a new home. 3525 King Springs Road Southeast was sold three times in the last five years. Let's talk property value. 3240 King Springs Road, a new home, sold for $523,300 in 2006. It was listed for sale on June 26, 2017 for $587,000. However, it didn't sell. From June 2017 to November, it became a rental. It finally sold on 11/26/17 for $538,000. That's $14,700 more than it sold for in 2006. So this congestion is not creating a community of long-term growth. I've watched all my neighbors move out. There, I think I'd know two on my block now. Again, we're talking about value. 3232 King Springs Road, sold in '04, 2006, for $5,007. It sold in 2010 for $4,400.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson, I appreciate all the effort and the stats you're giving us, but can you just summarize...
Get to the point.
Please.
Get to the point.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't have a problem with even three homes on those two lots, but you're talking four. And once you get four, you want five. And once you get five, you want six. One more stat: Oregon just had a fight with another community, and they are the best at packing people in small spaces. Someone wanted to put 12 homes on an acre. They fought it, and it's not going to be done. So my point is, I just don't want the congestion. None of us do. I want to call Smyrna a home where I can live and retire.
Right. And you just said yourself that one, we're talking about one home in this development, would make you happier.
Three homes on the two lots would make me happy.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You're saying that that'd be the deal for you, where you could get behind it and support it, would be three versus four.
Three versus four. I'd be happy.
And that's fair to articulate that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. Is there any other comments you'd like to make?
I was, but I think you got bored.
It's not boredom at all. We just, we have to set time limits on this kind of thing.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. I appreciate it as well. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this Mr. Thompson, would you like to come back and address the four versus three in the comments that Ms. Thompson made? No relation, I'm gathering.
Maybe distantly, who knows? But my sister and I don't agree on a lot of things either, so...
I was about to say, I...
The only comment I can make is that, you know, we've done this before, and I don't know that one home is gonna make that much difference, particularly with the design that we've come up with in terms of the central driveway, deliveries, as far as one home versus three, I mean, four home versus three. You know, they're probably gonna pull off into the central driveway anyway. But from my standpoint, you know, that doesn't work. It doesn't work for affordable housing, and I don't know what the term "affordable" means anymore, to be honest with you. But I appreciate, she lives on a beautiful lot over there, just down the street, and she and I did talk. I will also say that I've talked to some of the other homeowners in the area that are contiguous to the property, and they had questions, but no opposition that I was aware of. At least they didn't voice it to me. But I can't make it work at three. So it's, I mean, the application, I came in at four because that's what I thought I could make work. I think technically, our density is 2.1 units per acre, which under R15 is on the low end. I've done R15 developments, not necessarily in Smyrna, but in other places where I've been able to yield 2.5. And so I am at the low end of the density scale. But it's, I mean, technically, you probably could argue, and I don't know, I would get staff approval, but you could probably argue, you could put six homes on here if you did a cul-de-sac. I don't want to do that. I want to keep them fronted on King Springs.
Okay. Thank you for coming back up, Mr. Thompson. Any other comments or questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Jones, Mr. Bentley, do you guys have any comments or questions?
No, no more questions.
And this is in word three, correct? Right? Okay. Let's, Mr. Bentley, would you like to make a, well, no further discussion about this item? Mr. Bentley, would you like to make the motion, or a motion?
Yes. Yes, I'll make a motion, make a comment. I think the 2.1 units per acre is a pretty low density, certainly compared to a lot of other things I've seen. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the proposed pricing V20-073.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Can you hear that? All in favor of the motion as presented? And on the phone?
Hi.
Victor?
Hi.
Okay. The application is approved, seven, zero. Mr. Thompson, good luck with your project. Ms. Thompson, Mr. Thompson's a fantastic guy to deal with. Hopefully, he can get you more comfortable with his plan. He's done a tremendous amount of work here in the city, and I've always found him to be very responsive to citizen concerns, so I would encourage you to reach out to him. Good luck. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2020-521. This is zoning request, Z20-15. This is to allow for the rezoning from NS to GC for the use as a corporate office. This is 1.5 acres and land lot 523. This is 1298 Concord Road. Shamrock Building Systems is the applicant. Mr. Staub's, can I get the background, please?
Yes, sir. This is zoning case D20-015. Applicant is Shamrock Building Systems. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on January 19th of 2021. Subject property is 1298 Concord Road. It is about 1.5 acres. There's an existing one-story building, previously a bank, and the proposal is to use it as a corporate office. For that use, it needs to be rezoned from neighborhood shopping to GC, general commercial. There's a mixture of zonings in this area: limited commercial, neighborhood shopping, office institutional, general commercial, and some low-density residential in the back. Future land use is neighborhood activity center. Want to get a change to community activity center to allow general commercial. Again, there's also a mixture of land uses in this area: mixed use, neighborhood activity center, and low-density residential. This is a survey of the existing property. I'm just gonna show you what's currently there. It's not going to be modified on the exterior, at least. This is the existing setbacks, the existing building. It has parking circulating in the building with a drive-through, just like a bank would have. And there's an access drive to areas on Concord Road. There's a detention facility at the rear of the property. Here's the pictures of the subject property and adjacent properties. Staff is recommending approval, the rezoning from NS to GC on 1.5 acres for the use as a corporate office with the following conditions. First condition, that applicant shall remove vegetation and accumulated silt sediment from the existing detention pond and refresh riprap around the outlet control structure. Two, the following uses will be prohibited from the GC category: video arcade and game parlors; two, B, adult-themed book and novelty stores; C, automotive sales, repair or service facilities; D, movie theaters; E, gas stations at convenience stores with gas sales; F, fast-food establishments; G, pawn shops; H, automotive wash services; I, boat sales and repairs; J, boarding and breeding kennels; K, dry cleaning plants; L, farm equipment sales and service; M, lumber hardware and other building material establishments; N, mobile homes and trailer service sales; O, motorcycle sales and service; P, chat cashing establishment; Q, tax... O, motorcycle sales and service. P, check cashing establishment. Q, taxi stands. R, tattoo parlors. S, pool or billiard halls. T, massage parlors. And U, package stores. Last condition is that, uh, condition, it will be conditioned on the stipulations agreed upon by the applicant on the letter dated December fourth, two thousand and twenty. And I'll be, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Staub. Any questions from the board for Mr. Staub? Mr. Jones, do you have any questions?
No.
That was a no?
No.
Mr. Bentley, no? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Staub, if you don't go too far. Can we have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan? Mr. Sam, Sam's, good evening and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Garvis Samms. I'm with the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, and Huff in Marietta, and I represent Shamrock Building Systems Incorporated concerning this application for rezoning. I have with me, um, the, I won't say the entirety of the, of the family, but I have with me tonight Mr. Seamus Burke, Mr. Joseph Burke, and most importantly, the matriarch of the family, Mrs. Burke, who are seated here, uh, with me tonight, and, um, certainly, they can address any questions or, uh, any concerns that, that, that you guys may have that I'm not able to cover or wasn't covered in the zoning analysis and staff recommendations, which you've, which you've reviewed. First of all, Mr. Staub did a good job of teeing this up and, and orienting you with respect to the property's location, its past uses, and, and similar, and similar information. But more specifically, this, this was closed on by Shamrock about a month ago. In fact, it was the, uh, the Monday after the filing deadline. So we amended the application the following Monday to accommodate the closing where, uh, Shamrock bought this from, uh, Ameris. Prior to that, it was Holland's, uh, Commercial Bank. It was a very prominent position on, on Concord Road. I'm sure you've seen it. You've seen the photographs that are part of the, uh, the package that we've handed out, of course, the, uh, the imagery and the, and the photography that have been generated by your staff and contained within your, in your zoning, uh, analysis. This is, isn't, is in an area or sub-area of the city that, that has a multiplicity of uses, uh, but interestingly so, there are uses that seem to, to mix, uh, have a synergy all, all of its own, and this, this has always kind of fit there in the context of that, and it's a large enough tract at one-point-five acres, so it was probably more property than the bank needed, but it, it accommodated the bank well. And now that, um, Shamrock has bought that, what they, what they intend to do, and what they intended to do even prior to purchase, is to move their corporate offices here. The entirety of their, their office location. It's presently zoned NS, uh, and interestingly enough, unlike, uh, many jurisdictions, NS doesn't allow for the professional office component. It's a, it's a retail classification for retail service, so it does require rezoning. And after meeting with staff before we filed the application, we determined, uh, that GC was the appropriate application, excuse me, the appropriate classification in which to, to rezone it. There are a number of, um, stipulations, become conditions of the zoning that have been imposed by staff. Similarly, by virtue of the, um, stipulation letter we submitted on December four, you can see we, we enhanced, added to, uh, or dovetail very nicely into the way staff was, was looking at this in terms of prohibited uses, but quite candidly, for purposes tonight, this is for Shamrock, for their offices, for their operations, not to, not to flip. I mean, ultimately, there may be an exit strategy ten, fifteen years down the road where they wanna sell it for office use to someone else, but for right now, this building is perfect to repurpose from, from the bank building that it is, um, to, um, the offices that we propose that it, that it be. The, um, the property is within a, a neighborhood activity center, um, so when we filed the application, even though we're not really requesting a change in the future land use map by definition, I think your staff looks at it, at it that way. Quite honestly, with the conditional nature of the GC we're looking for, it's so stepped up and conditioned up that it, it still fits within a, a neighborhood activity center or a community activity center, either one. We're, we're fine, we're fine with that either way, that it, that it turns out. Uh, we'll continue to utilize the property in its as-built circumstances. Of course, there's some innate features to a bank that they're gonna incorporate the drive-throughs, uh, with the, uh, the design and utilize that, but it, nobody's gonna be making deposits or withdrawals there. Deposits will be fine. They'll welcome those, but, um, that's obviously gonna be part of, uh, the repurposing, the retrofitting, and the rehabbing of this property for, uh, their offices. This is specific to the site plan you have, and the site plan you have is an as-built of the property on this, on the site. There are a number of uses we included in our letters, twenty-five uses that would be otherwise permitted under general commercial, but we've omitted those. Again, this is specific to the site plan. And Shamrock really likes the site, really wants a presence here in the, in the city of Smyrna. Um, we are asking that your community development director during the process be allowed to make minor modifications or revisions as the rezoning proceeds through plan review. Obviously, the site's been engineered. But there'll be some things that, that will need to be done from plan review to bring it up to, up to speed in terms of what Shamrock really needs, so your staff's recommended approval. Unlike most of the rezonings I handle, which tend towards the more controversial ones, is we've gotten some phone calls, but, but is, no one's prepared to question that I haven't been able to answer evidently satisfactorily. I don't think we have anyone here in opposition tonight. But if we do, then I certainly will talk to them between now and the, and the mayor and council meeting. But we just simply ask you follow your staff's recommendation that you, as a planning commission, recommend to the mayor and council that the application be approved as we presented it and as contained within staff's analysis and recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Samms. Um, any questions for the applicant? Or the applicant representative? Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Bartlett's got a question for you.
Mr. Samms, real quick, the, the nature of the company, there's no outside storage or anything on that property?
No, sir.
Excellent.
No, sir.
All right, um, Mr. Jones, do you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Thank you. Mr. Bentley, do you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative?
No questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Samms, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward to the microphone. My wife's a teacher, but I don't make people raise their hand when they wanna come up. You just come up whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm Maggie Shannon. I live in, uh, city of Smyrna. I just have a couple of questions for the applicant. One is, it sounds like from Tom's question, that it's gonna not be a storage facility. They're gonna have an office there, so there's gonna be activity on the street to go along with sort of the main street fabric that we're trying to create in city of Smyrna. And then I also wanna make sure that if they do flip the property, is it gonna remain O-I, or is it gonna go back to NS?
Those are very good questions. I'll tell you what, I'm really, really good at making people feel uncomfortable, so why don't we ask, uh, the applicant to come up, uh, or the applicant's representative, and to answer some specific questions about the type of business?
Okay.
And then by omission of what they've, the items that they've taken out of general commercial, if any of those things were to wanna pop up in this location, they'd have to come right back here and start the process over again. Is that correct? Okay. So this, they're, they're really just trying to make this specific for their corporate office.
Okay, so if they, if they sell it, then it goes back to NS?
No, it'll, it'll, it'll stay in this classification with these limitations.
With all the limitations that were spoken about.
That won't change.
Okay, okay.
But let's, let, those are good questions. Let's, let's, uh, Ms. Shannon, let's, let's get Mr. Samms back up here. I, I, when I said uncomfortable, I meant like the applicant, like, get one of those guys over here, you know, give them the microphone, and let them tell us about the traffic flow of what's gonna be in the office, uh, number of vehicles, what kinda, what kinda activities we can expect.
Sure, um, and this is Joseph Burke. Uh, I'll let him respond to that. He was probably on his way up here anyway.
Perfect.
But, uh, there, there is no reversion clause. We've not asked for one. The city's not asked for one, so we are asking that it remains how it is owned.
Okay.
Joseph Burke.
Thank you for clarifying that. Good evening, Joseph.
Howdy, Joseph. Nice to meet you guys. Um, yeah, we're Shamrock Building Systems, design, build, general contractors, family business. Um, our construction yard has been on still for twenty-five, thirty years. Um, it's gonna ma, it's gonna re, it's gonna remain out there. This is more our, uh, design office that we're moving the corporate headquarters to. Um, it's better worker pool, uh, more professional atmosphere. We have a bank loan on the property now that is owner occupied, so that kinda answers the flip question. We have no interest in flipping the property.
Okay, what kinda, what kinda volume of traffic, number of employees working out of this space?
We have twelve employees that'll be in that office, so much less than the current bank.
Okay. Good. Any questions for the applicant, guys? And it was Joseph Burke, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up. Mr. Bentley, Mr. Jones, did you guys have any other questions you wanted to ask?
No. No questions.
Ms. Shannon, hopefully, we got your question answered there. Thank you for coming out tonight. All right. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, then I would like to entertain a motion. I do believe this is also in Mr. Bentley's ward. Or am I, I'm wrong, aren't I? It's often. Mr. Seagraves? Like to entertain a motion.
My thing on here. Zoning request C-twenty dash zero-one-five. Uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the, um, zoning change.
Got a motion for Mr. Seagraves to approve. Do we have a second? Mr. Bartlett, hardest-working man on the planning board. All in favor of the application? Uh, Mr. Bentley, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, and Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Also vote in favor.
Okay. So your application's approved, seven-zero. Welcome to Smyrna. Good luck with your business. Thank you, Mr. Samms. Always entertaining. All right, the next item on our agenda is item, uh, two-zero-one-nine dash four-four-zero. This is zoning request Z-one-nine dash zero-one-nine, rezoning from NRC and O-I to RM-ten for the development of a hundred and fifty-one townhomes at a density of six-point-three units per acre. This is twenty-three-point-nine-five acres, uh, landlots seven-seven-five, eight-ten, and eight-eleven. This is twenty-three-twenty Campbell Road. The applicant is Inline Communities LLC. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Good evening, Rusty Martin, Community Development Director, uh, city of Smyrna. If y'all remember, this zoning request came before the planning and zoning board back, um, July thirteenth. It was a little bit different design, um, some different uses. Uh, the, the applicant has, uh, changed the site plan, eliminated a use off the property. So the, the changes were significant enough that they needed to come back to P and Z, uh, for review and for a new, um, recommendation to mayor and council. Back in July, you guys heard the original request. It was for two-hundred-and-eighty-four residential units, which were basically comprised of a hundred-and-seventy, uh, senior, uh, residential independent housing units, and then one-hundred-and-fourteen, uh, townhome units. So you had a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-four units at a density, I believe, of, uh, eleven-point-eight-five units per acre. At that time, the, the planning and zoning board recommended denial to mayor and council by a vote of six-zero. So we'll go through this presentation again, and, and we'll, we'll talk about the changes and what that looks like with respect to their site plan. This request is, uh, set up to be heard by y'all tonight and get a recommendation on the zoning, and then it is scheduled to go back to mayor and council next week, uh, at, at seven PM, um, here in this, in this building. The subject property is located at the, uh, intersection of Spring Road and Campbell Road. It is approximately twenty-three acres in size. Uh, it is currently undeveloped, and the, the applicant is, um, is proposing to develop the site with one-hundred-and-fifty-one, uh, residential townhome units. The property is currently in Cobb County. They are requesting to annex the property into this, into Smyrna, um, along with this rezoning. The, the rezoning of the property in, in, uh, in Cobb County is neighborhood retail center and office institution. They are proposing to rezone this property, uh, to RM-ten planned unit development. It's a, it's a residential group project under the planned unit development guidelines. If y'all remember, the original rezoning was for mixed-use conditional, um, so that, that is where the, the change in use is, is being done. The future land use in Cobb County, uh, has a, the property has a designation of community activity center. There is no proposed change from, uh, community activity center. Um, that is a, that's one of the more intensive, uh, land use categories, um, in the city. The adjoining land uses are, um, regional activity center and community accen, uh, community activity center to the north. Public institutional and regional activity center to the east, and high-density residential in the county to the south, and low-density residential to the west. So you've got, you've got a fair mixture of, um, future land uses within this specific area. This is the, the new proposed site plan. As you can see, um, they have relocated the, um, amenity and pool area from, um, the south side of the new road off of, uh, Campbell Road and moved it to the north behind, um, the gas station, and then they've reconfigured the, um, residential area at the south and up at the north with, um, single-family attached, um, townhomes. With this, uh, development, they're proposing a front setback from, um, Spring Road and Campbell Road at twenty feet. And then a front setback off the Campbell Road extension at ten feet. Um, the eastern side has a side setback of ten feet. The western side, um, has a setback of twenty-five. And then the, the northern side along the gas station, there's, um, they're asking for a setback of zero. There's a, 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 a boundary dispute as to where that boundary line is located. If you split the difference, it's probably gonna be, um, it's probably gonna be a ten-foot setback at its closest point, once they resolve that. The rear, uh, setback along the railroad is, is forty feet. They're proposing, um, some, some front-entry townhomes. Those are gonna be twenty-four feet by forty-four feet, and there's basically, uh, seventy-three residential units with, with that, uh, housing product. There are seventy-eight, um, rear-entry, uh, townhome units, and those units are twenty feet. Twenty, they're twenty feet wide and twenty-two feet wide by forty-four feet in depth. This is the location of the proposed pool amenity area. And then there are some, these are the location of the guest parking throughout the, the community. There will be a full access drive at, uh, Campbell Road. And then there, in addition to that, there'll be a decel lane on the northbound lane as you, uh, head toward, on Campbell Road, as you head towards Spring Road. And the, the decel lane will be a right-hand turn into the community. Um, as you head southbound on Campbell Road, um, there'll be a dedicated left-hand turn lane, and those will be improvements made by, uh, the developer. In addition, um, as part of this, staff asks the developer to look at, uh, the possibility of including a median, um, along Campbell Road, just a small curb median. It's not gonna be a planted median or anything. But it's, it's basically an operational improvement. It's a small curb median, um, basically from the left-hand turn lane up to the intersection of Spring Road and Campbell Road. Then on Spring Road, there'll be a right-in, right-out access with a Then on Spring Road, there'll be a right-in, right-out access with a deceleration lane to allow the, the cars to pull out of the traffic lane as, as they're coming into the development. With this development, there's a ten-foot landscape buffer along the eastern property boundary and then a twenty-foot buffer along the western boundary that abuts of Vining's Point. This is the location of the male kiosk for the development. And then the location of the stormwater detention facility. Within this property, there, there is a stream buffer, there's a stream and it, it is buffered. They are showing some small encroachments into that buffer at a couple points along the way. They are proposing to mitigate that buffer impact by preserving additional buffer area somewhere else along that, along that stream, so they're, they're playing on buffer averaging. This is the proposed road extension from Campbell Road. This will be the entrance into the development. It will be a public road. The rest of the roads within the development will be private roads. With this rezoning, they're requesting several variances. The first is for a reduction of the side setback along the gas station from ten feet to zero feet. The next one is a reduction of side-to-back building separation from thirty feet to twenty. I think that, that's supposed to say side to side. A reduction, the next one is a reduction of front setback from fifty feet down to twenty. The next one is a reduction of the front setback along Campbell Extension Road from fifty feet down to ten. And then a reduction of the western side setback from thirty-five to, to ten. And, or, I'm sorry, the western side setback from thirty-five down to twenty-five and the eastern side from thirty-five to, to ten. The next one is to allow driveway length to twenty-two feet from back of curb and reduce that down to twenty feet from back of sidewalk and eighteen feet on alleyways. And then the last one is a reduction of the rear setback, which is a corridor design standard from a hundred feet down to forty. This is the proposed tree plan for the development. And then we have proposed cross-sections. And, and these show you the grade changes from the property line along Vining's Point as you move towards the stream along the narrow section of the development. And just show you what those grade differences are. These are the proposed building elevations. Pictures of the subject property and pictures of the adjacent property. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from NRC and OI to RM ten planned unit development on twenty-three point nine five acres for the development of one hundred and fifty-one townhomes at a density of six point three units per acre with the following conditions. Number one deals with the compositions of the homes and the facade make, makeup. Number two requires a retention pond and that it be placed and screened appropriately. Number three requires the establishment of an HOA and protective covenants. Number four requires the developer provide at least two hundred square feet of common, common space per lot. Number five deals, deals with the, the placement of utilities and them being underground. Number six requires the developer to be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number seven, well, let me go back to number six, and it also requires that sidewalks be provided by the developer inside and outside the development. Number seven requires a brick pavers and stamp, or stamped concrete for the subdivision entrance. Number eight states that the, the roadway shall be developed to city standards. Number nine, no debris can be buried on any lot or common area. Number ten requires decorative street lighting. Eleven requires the developer to comply with the city's tree ordinance. Number twelve, it requires landscape plans to be done by a registered landscape architect. Thirteen, all yards and common areas are to be sodded and landscaped. Fourteen is the setbacks for the property. Fifteen are the building separation requirements for the townhome units between building, between buildings. Sixteen limits the impervious surface area for the development sixty-five percent. Seventeen limits the, the building height to forty-five feet. Eighteen limits the maximum number of units per building to six units. Nineteen requires installation of the deceleration lane along Spring Road and Campbell Road. Twenty shall require the installation of the left-hand turn lane on Campbell Road. Twenty-one requires the, the installation of, um, the developer shall provide access management that restricts turning movements near the, the Spring Road intersection on Campbell Road. Twenty-two, the driveway length should be twenty-two feet. And then twenty-three, the roads and utility infrastructure within the community shall be private and maintained by an HOA. Twenty-four deals with the buffer averaging for the stream buffer encroachments, so they need to replace their encroachment at a one-to-one ratio. The develop, not twenty-five, the developer shall meet all fire access requirements during plan review by the Fire Marshal's Office. Twenty-six, developer shall be responsible for any water sewer improvements deemed necessary by Public Works Director. Twenty-seven, the developer shall be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Twenty-eight, the developers should provide a twenty-foot landscape buffer in accordance with section ten thirteen along the western property line and a ten-foot landscape buffer on the eastern property line. The developer shall replace, replace any disturbed sidewalk in curb and gutter along the frontage of Campbell Road and Spring Road. Thirty, the developer shall make a sidewalk connection from development to Campbell Road. And thirty-one, the developer shall dedicate right-of-way along Campbell Road to meet the minimum of thirty feet from center line. And these are it, I promise you. Thirty-two prohibits the community from being gated. And thirty-three ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. And thirty-four ties the zoning of the property to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin?
One quick question. It seems, seems like some of the variances aren't being taken advantage of from a setback standpoint, unless I'm reading the site plan incorrectly. I understood your explanation on the zero setback from the gas station, which still, that kinda confuses me too as far as why there's that big of a discrepancy in the land. But that's, that's not our concern. But it looked like on the frontage of Spring Road, maybe the townhomes weren't as close as they were trying to get the variance for. I think if, if I'm reading it correctly, there was a variance for front setback from fifty to twenty.
Yeah.
They're not twenty feet up against Spring. I'm just, why are we asking, why are we giving them a variance that they're not asking for? Or taking advantage of?
Mr. Martin, does that have anything to do with the right-of-way on Spring?
Yeah, there may be a right-of-way, there, there may be a right-of-way dedication as well as you guys have to recognize that this is a conceptual plan at this point, so they haven't done a full engineering of this. So, um, yeah, while they may be more than twenty feet off at that point, that, I think they're, they're trying to figure out exactly where they need to be. And they're trying to set it for both, for both exterior roads. So it may not be twenty feet for Spring Road, but it may actually be twenty feet for Campbell Road. So they're setting that, that boundary on, on that side. We're not going through every building and saying, for building A, it's gonna be twenty feet, building B, it's gonna be thirty feet and so forth. We're trying to set a general setback requirement for the community.
Maybe I'm just ahead of, of myself, but it's, it would seem to me we're, we have a site plan in front of us that they aren't, and, and we have variances being asked for that the site plan doesn't represent. So how are we supposed to apply a site plan condition to a variance that, that they're not responding to?
Yeah, I mean typically the, the, most of the time that we do this, there's leeway from my office to be able to do site plan adjustments based off of the engineering that comes back when they...
They probably can respond to it.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna get into it too much, but...
Yeah, I mean that, that, the, I understand what you're saying. I, I just think they're, they were trying to set just a general setback for the overall development with respect to Spring Road and Campbell Road.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Bentley, do you have any questions?
None for me.
Mr. Jones, do you have any?
No question, dear.
Okay. Can you, can you speak, Russ, Mr. Martin, can you speak a little bit about, I understand that there have been some improvements suggested by the planning department with respect to the roadway, the intersection. Can you go into a little bit more grainy detail on what we've asked them, what improvements we've asked them to make?
Yeah, I mean basically on Campbell Road, there will be, on the southbound travel lane, there'll be a dedicated left-hand turn lane into the community. On the northbound travel lane, there'll be a decel lane to make your right-hand turn into the community. And there will be, um, from the end of the dedicated left-hand turn lane to Spring Road, there is planned to be a, um, a curb median there to restrict traffic from the shopping center that makes the left, left-hand turn movement into the northbound Campbell Road. The northbound lane there and creates havoc for people trying to either make a left off of Spring Road into Campbell Road and all that stuff. So we're trying to eliminate some traffic conflicts and create some, um, create some operational improvements over there.
And these improvements would be the responsibility of the developer?
As it's written in the, in the zoning requirements, yes. So ultimately, they've gotta do the full engineering. We've gotta make sure, um, that the, you know, delivery trucks and everything else for the gas station are able to access the site and all that. We think it, it's gonna work out, but once we get the full turning models and radiuses and everything, we'll, we'll really have an idea of what's going on.
Okay. And just one question, one more. This is being annexed into the city. Assuming there was some, that there is an approval, they would annex it into the city. If they were to leave it in the county, what, what would their options be for developing this property?
The front half of the property in Cobb County is Neighborhood Retail Center. The back half is O and I. They have represented in the traffic study that, you know, they could potentially do some sort of a retail center on the front half of the property and then do, um, do some office space on, on the back half of the property with some structured parking to accommodate for the, the, the parking requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Martin.
That's what's allowed by right under Cobb, so they could go to permitting with that with Cobb County and the city wouldn't have any comment or any ability to, you know, dictate what goes on with respect to accesses to Campbell Road and Spring Road at that point.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one more question. Ms. Martin, as far as the engineering study that is to come is concerned, what happens if the city engineer determines that the foot-and-a-half median isn't viable? Or it looks like there's some right-of-way items that have to be worked out in the future with, with perhaps Vining's Point?
We, we've, well, we've left the, the requirement in the zoning stipulations they're responsible for any improvements deemed necessary by the engineer at that point. So if we've gotta work something else out, I mean, within reason that is in due part to this development, then we'll work that out with them.
During engineering.
I guess my, my comment is more related to working out the finer details as to whether or not we need a little bit more dedication on a roadway or we need to shorten the, the median that's reflected on there because there's got, they've gotta have the turning radius there.
Yep. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan. It's not often that we have two Kevin Moores in the room. So if you would just clarify which one you are. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Planning and Zoning Board members. I'm Kevin Moore, Nacho Public Works Director, City Engineer, and represent Inline Communities and this property owner in this application for rezoning. Thanks for that while we get the, get the technology set up so that we can walk through this presentation and, and share with you our thoughts on this application. And appreciate your time here tonight and hopefully also I can certainly be happy to answer those questions. And again, if, if, if needed, as part of this application that you just went, went through. First, this is a twenty-four acre tract. We came before this board in July with a proposal and since that time have continued to work on it and continued to work on it and continued to work on it. I believe this applicant, Inline Communities, has gone above and beyond. I have not had an applicant, a client, that has undertaken this level of engagement and change to try to be responsive and we believe has been extremely responsive to comments and issues and concerns that have been expressed by not, by not only this board, but by the community at large. If you notice the, at the very first slide that staff showed, this was originally submitted for application November of two thousand and nineteen. This application was heavily impacted by COVID when it hit in March, when it was originally scheduled to be heard. And then as we continued to try to work with the community, we held community meetings and met with folks and continued to try to improve this application because they, they believe and Inline Communities believes there's a unique opportunity to develop this property and build a community, a townhome community here on this twenty-four acres that is entirely consistent with the surrounding area and far, far better than as it's currently positioned in Cobb County. But first, let's just go through, if you would, with me, why we believe this application should be recommended for approval to the mayor and city council. First, what you see on your map is a real display of this property and its current zoning. You see about, it's about half and half, about maybe fifty-five, forty-five, but zoned NRC, which is a commercial retail category in Cobb County, as well as O and I in Cobb County. You'll see the surrounding zoning. You'll see the surrounding zonings, a mixture of city zonings as well as county zonings, but primarily what I want you to notice is the residential densities and and categories that are surrounding this property. Everything from multifamily apartments to townhomes to condominiums to single-family, as well as a large piece of property located to the south across the railroad that's zoned in Cobb County, R-8. So you start with up to eight units per acre at that location. It's 12 units per acre, actually a little bit more because it was grandfathered with the multifamily property. The additional townhomes that are between eight and 10 units per acre. You also have up to eight units per acre, the condominiums across Campbell Road. Then you have the R-15, which is the Vining's Point subdivision, a very nice neighborhood that we've met with their board a number of times, which is just over three units per acre. So what we're proposing at 6.3 units per acre now is something that is on the lower end of that scale, between three and just over 12, and especially given what's adjacent to us and especially given what this property is currently zoned for in terms of its intensity in the county. In addition, as a further point of reference for you, this property has been designated as a key annexation area by the City of Smyrna in its policies and its comprehensive plan for 2040. That's the reason being is it's almost surrounded by the city. This property, if once developed, it should be in the city. The city will be providing services because of its close proximity and and under your service agreements with the county, and it should really be in the city and controlled by the city and permitted by the city in all respects. And that's why we are asking for this rezoning and annexation. In addition, you can also notice it's close proximity to the SunTrust Park, I guess it's Truist Park Major Hub now that it's called, which has been designated as a hub for high-density development. As this project is currently proposed to you, it would not be such a high-density development as it had been previously. In addition, from a land use plan, a comprehensive plan standpoint, you can see where this property is located and a couple of things that are key here. Number one, it's located adjacent to a regional activity center, your most intense future land use category. It's located adjacent to that regional activity center, which encourages much higher density development than what we are proposing. It's also located within a community activity center on the Cobb County Future Land Use Plan. And as staff has noted, with our current proposal as opposed to the prior proposal, it would then stay within that community activity center designation. And likewise, as staff has concluded and as it's easily demonstrated, this property is proposed for the townhome development now being proposed is consistent with that community activity center designation on your future land use plan, another planning document in which this current proposal is now consistent. Getting to that current proposal, it's really important, we also believe, to really compare what had been proposed previously that you heard in July. The initial application had almost 300 units, 297 units. When you heard it in July, it had been reduced down just a bit, but as originally proposed, this was 12.4 units per acre. It was proposed for 117 townhomes and 180 senior living units originally. If you recall, there was a senior living component, it was a building on the front of the property, more towards the intersection with Campbell and Spring that had 180 senior units. Since that time, part of the retooling that we have gone about is to revise this plan. We removed that senior living use in total to transform this into a total townhome project that we believe is much more responsive to the community concerns that we had heard. This is now a total of 151 units, period, at 6.3 units per acre and kind of to highlight some of the key components of this site plan. First, you'll see, and we'll go into much more detail as we go through it, you have two main entrances, one on Campbell, as well as, and that's over kind of towards the left top of your screen, and also a entrance onto Spring Road. That entrance on Spring Road now is a right-in, right-right-out entrance, but you'll also see now this entire community can access and exit and enter from that Spring Road exit. Previously, which is a major change from the plan that you reviewed in July, this plan had proposed an access to Woodruff Drive, which is down towards the bottom left. Woodruff Drive comes out onto Spring Road just east of where this Argos Elementary School is. We had proposed a full access connection there to provide direct access for the townhome portion of this development to Spring Road. That was met with a bunch of opposition, a good deal of opposition from the Woodruff Drive residents. Since that July meeting, we have had a number of meetings and discussions with them and with their homeowners association and in fact entered into an agreement of support with them because we have now removed that connection at Woodruff Drive and obtained their support for that. The only connection we're showing now is a pedestrian walkway and bridge so that they too can enjoy the open space park that we're going to create by virtue of this plan, as well as provide connectivity of walkability to down Woodruff Road for both of us, Woodruff Drive for both projects out to Spring, as well as providing the direct access to Spring now throughout this project, providing for that alternative location for access. And that's a major component of this project and one in which we have promised and committed, and this plan shows that any type of approval of this proposed rezoning would come with no vehicular access to Woodruff Drive whatsoever. And I just want to make sure I highlight that for you. In addition, the selected townhome builder is Toll Homes, Toll Brothers, which is one of the leading nationally recognized luxury home builders and has wanted to do this project and has been with us all along because of the importance of this project to them. You see the proposed townhome elevations here and the projected sales prices of $450 to $525,000. So you can see that the level of quality and importance that Toll Brothers and in-line communities place with this project, this will be a high-quality project, a high-quality community to add to Smyrna in this location. With that, I want to also explain a little bit, maybe I can touch on some of the setback questions that were answered were asked as well, but I want to really highlight a couple of key components to this plan. Number one, almost 41% of the property is preserved as open space. We've shown that. That land, while there is a stream through a portion of it, it is developable. We have chosen, though, to stay away from that, to create a open space park to be enjoyed by these residents and also the Woodruff Drive residents who will have access to it with pedestrian bridge as well as walking trails throughout that open space park. Really importantly, along that, and it's the left-hand side of your screen, but along our western boundary, where we're adjacent to Vining's Point, a little bit about that boundary line. On the Vining's Point side, they have a dedicated 10-foot undisturbed planted buffer that's within their zoning and within their plant that's actually plat, that's actually owned by their homeowners association. So they have 10 feet on their side of heavily planted, mature landscaping that provides for a buffer to this property. What we're proposing is a 20-foot buffer, similarly planted, heavily planted along our entire boundary with combined with their buffer, provides a 30-foot heavily planted tree buffer along that common boundary line. In addition, while it shows a 25-foot setback along that side, and this is important, our homes are actually anywhere between 40 and 50 feet away from the property line along this line. It's not they're not set at that setback line. They're actually set, they'll be 40 to 50 feet, depending on where you are along that line, from the adjacent property line. And that's specific and and designed so we could make sure we maximize the distance and maximize the planted buffer along that shared property line. Rusty showed you this diagram, and I want to talk about it just a bit more. This is along that shared property line and what you can see with these profiles. As you can see how the property to the left is Vining's Point, to the right is our new development. As we fall down to the to the stream along that line, what we've done is made sure that we are building our townhomes, those are those front entry townhomes that are built into the hill, utilizing that existing slope so that we're not going to go up higher. We'll actually sit far lower than Vining's Point homes. In addition, we've done those so that the front-facing garages, the the two-and-a-half to three-story side of that is on the inside of our development with only two stories maximum facing to our adjoining residents. And again, that's to keep the high side on the low portion of our development interior and for their and for the aesthetic and visual minimizing the visual impacts to our adjoining neighbors. You can see how that has been done and that was specifically designed for this project. In addition, as we get into some of the traffic issues and road issues, and I want to detail those for you. First and foremost, as recommended by the City of Smyrna's plans in both planning studies, the Spring Road corridor and the Smyrna Gateway Plan is to try to create a connector road, a reliever road along the south side of Spring Road. And so we are providing for that future connectivity and that's why you see that interior Campbell Road connection or extension where we're providing that as an extended public right-of-way so that at some point in the future, if that connector road can be built and obtained and by the city, that we haven't prevented it by this project. Getting down to some of the more detailed pieces of the road improvements that we are providing, on the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see the current Campbell Road as it crosses our as it comes adjacent to our property. You see that intersection of Spring and Campbell on the left. On the right, you see our site plan and what we're going to be doing. And through all that discussion of the road improvements, essentially what we're doing is is adding an additional, at least a lane to almost two lanes of width along Campbell Road in that location. As you approach from Campbell Road to Spring Road, we'll be installing a deceleration lane in addition that'll be separated with a strike gore. In addition, we'll have a left-turn lane. If you're coming from Spring Road, we'll have a full left-hand turn lane. What that does is enable both through lanes to continue without being stopped. There's left-hand turn lane and deceleration lanes that are being placed in that location. In addition, as you can see, we've got 390 feet of site distance along that corner. What we're doing is bringing that road, widening really the visual of the road on Campbell Road, if you've traveled that, widening that visual. What you see now is woods all the way up almost to the curb. Now that'll be widened out with the additional left-hand turn lane and decelerate lane that provides for a full, safe access at this location. We have a boulevard entrance for that purpose and can maintain a more than sufficient site distance as well as ensure the safety of that and the workability and efficiency of that intersection. We have also shown the access mitigation that has been discussed by staff, that was proposed by staff as a potential concept to help the efficiency of that intersection, and we are happy to install that operational improvement at our cost if staff and your city engineer would like for us to do so at that time. A little bit more about the traffic and the trip generation. As we've shown and as concluded within our traffic report, the trip generation of the proposed zoning is 89% less trips in traffic in the EM and the AM and 88% less traffic in the PM compared to the existing zoning. And it's important, the comment is, well, just because it's better than the alternative doesn't mean it should be approved. But that's really not the consideration we'd like to urge you to to think about tonight. As it's currently zoned for office institutional NRC, this property is going to be developed. It's it's time. You have tracks of property like this that the city has seen before, seen this track before and continues to see, and this this owner is ready to move forward and it's ready to be developed. And if it's developed under its current zoning, then it'll produce far, far more traffic impacts without the input of your city engineer and without the input of this board and the city council, and it'll be far worse from a traffic impact standpoint than what we are proposing. What's being proposed tonight by in-line communities is the traffic answer for this development of this property. Does it solve the Spring Road traffic problems? Absolutely not. But as the traffic study, which we, by the way, did five different updates to the traffic study as this moved through this process, that traffic study at the end of the day says, once under the build conditions of this versus the no build, if you don't build anything, there aren't negative impacts to the levels of service in those two comparisons. And that's what the professional traffic engineer who's here tonight can answer that for himself, but that was the conclusion of his study. In addition, your staff analysis, which supported this exact conclusion, stated that this proposal and proposed rezoning and development is not expected to cause a burden to existing street network or transportation facilities. So those are two different sets of professionals who have reviewed this from a traffic standpoint and reached that conclusion. At the end, at the end, we believe that this applicant and urge you to consider that this applicant has gone as far as we've seen any applicant go in terms of trying to meet the concerns that have been identified. This project, as it currently sits and being proposed, is one that is consistent from every single planning document that has been adopted by the city. The Spring Road LCI study of 2017 encouraged exactly this type of development on the edge of the Spring Road corridor, right where this is. It's encouraged exactly this level of density, which is not that much because it wants to encourage further density as you get closer towards Cobb Parkway. As staff noted, this proposal is consistent with that adopted planning document from the City of Marietta, City of Smyrna. It's also consistent with the City of Smyrna's Future Land Use Plan designation for this as community activity center. It's consistent with Cobb County's Future Land Use Plan designation as a community activity center. And given the level of road improvements that are being proposed by this applicant and the level of quality that's being proposed in this rezoning by Toll Brothers, it's an application we respectfully urge your recommendation for approval. We are in total agreement with all of staff's recommendations and all of staff's special stipulations, and we are here along with the principals of in-line communities, Brian Musov, our project engineer, Ken Wood, and our traffic engineer, Abdul Amir, and hopefully can answer any questions that you may have, and we appreciate your time and consideration here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have any, excuse me, any questions for the for the applicant's representative? Okay. Mr. Bentley, do you have any questions for Mr. Moore or the applicant? Okay. Mr. Jones, do you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Yeah, actually, sorry if you're dressed this, it's a little hard to hear over the phone, but what was the price point for these townhomes?
Projected projected sales prices are $450 to $525,000.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm sure we'll have some more questions for you.
Certainly.
As we go through this process. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right. At this time, this is a a public hearing. We'd like to ask anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, that now is the time. Please come forward one at a time, give us an opportunity to sanitize or clean the podium in between visitors. We are running a timer because of the number of people we have in attendance at three minutes per person, so if you could be respectful of that and try to express your concerns without immense redundancy. We know there's going to be concerns regarding traffic. Let's let's talk specific about what you you're here for. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name's Robert Thompson. I live at 2976 Woodruff Drive.
Is everybody in Smyrna named Thompson tonight?
Yeah. Popular name. I'm one of the board members at Hampton Place. So originally, when this proposal was put forward, Woodruff Drive was going to be used as a connection, and that was going to create absolute nightmare at the top of Spring for us and the and the four businesses up there. So with that, we had a meeting with Brian. He came out and all the homeowners got together and we tried to hash it out and he gave us three different options. And one of the options was that he would remove Woodruff Drive entirely from the from the development. So with that, you know, we all met internally within the HOA, we put it to a vote. 75% voted in favor of remove if we he removed Woodruff, we would support the development. And with that said, everyone was happy. They were happy with the plans. Now the plans have all changed and it's actually even better with the reduction in the density. So we're just here to voice our support and endorse his his development. Yeah, so we're in favor of of the development with the exception of Woodruff Drive has to be removed from the development.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I even broke my own rule tonight. All right. We have a citizen on the phone, so we're going to take take this this call for questions and concerns. Good evening and welcome, I hope.
Okay, Ms. Buffington, it's it's your turn.
Um, I'm not prepared because I'm not really getting in front of a computer, but I'm just calling. My main objection to this, I didn't know how the whole plan had been changed, so I understand that a lot of the other issues have been addressed, but the one thing that hasn't changed at all is the whole row of attached three-story townhomes that's going to go very close to the property line. And it was my understanding that previously that the exact thing And it was my understanding that previously that the exact same setup, we were talking about being entitled to a 50-foot buffer, which I believe we are under Section 503 of the municipal code. Apparently, there's some issue as to that. But I don't believe there should be a variance. And if the zoning is changed from the zoning in which we would get that 50-foot buffer, I would be saying, yeah, I would object to that changing. The main thing is all technicality aside, this would be putting in a big wall of attached townhomes that are six townhomes wide with only 20 feet between them. So essentially, one big wall of, I think it's about 50-something townhomes all in a row on that ridge right on our property line. And that's, I think by anybody's definition, a different usage, a substantially different usage, whether it's some kind of residential or not, it's residential multi-family versus residential single-family. But we also, you know, actually in the real world, we have like 50, 60, 400 yards in our single-family homes that are between a fifth and a quarter of an acre. And we have going to be three-story, 12-attached townhomes. And so basically, I don't see how that's changed at all or how that's been ameliorated. I brought this up at a meeting when the zoning was denied in July. I don't see it made into the minutes, but it is on the audio. And so that's my major objection. That's going to disperately impact us. I also feel that this was, since we're in a hurry here and I don't have anything in front of me, I'll just have to say straightforwardly, I think this was not properly addressed in the sections, I believe it's 1, 2, 8, and 9 in the recommendations from the planning committee or whatever, because they seem to be taking some sort of coverage of what all the things around the development are. But that's truly not pertinent to that one big huge property line that has all those townhomes along it. And so I think that should be considered separately. And that hasn't changed at all. And I want to also say that it seems like, how is this really different than what they came at us with? I'm looking at it around three years ago initially when there were only called towns. I just don't see that that's ever been changed. And, you know, I've never been contacted by them. I'm one of the homeowners that's right on that property line. I've never heard anything from them as to, you know, how they're going to explain this. Anyway, I guess that's, I guess they've made it clear enough. Why it's like that and it's going to diminish the value of our homes measurably. And that is not opposed to nothing, but as opposed to...
Ms. Buffington.
All right. So just to be clear, Ms. Buffington, and if I could just get her to be able to answer in the affirmative to this, her chief concern is the height of the buildings on the shared boundary and the proximity?
Hold on one second. You ran out of time. You were limited to five minutes. But Chairman Powell is asking specifically, your chief concerns are the building heights associated with the townhomes along the residential property line along with the buffer setback?
Well, it's the buffer setback, but we will have three-story long, these are set in six-town home completely attached units. So that means they're anywhere between 120 and 150 feet continuously long, three-story buildings. And there's like eight of them, you know? So it's like basically, we will be facing realistically all technicality aside, what we'll be looking at is an entire, you know, 1,200-foot-long wall of townhomes versus single-family homes on the other side. That's what I was cutting through. It's just going to be, it's going to diminish the value of our homes. I have the interest in that.
All right. Thank, Ms. Buffington.
Measurably.
Ms. Buffington, thank you very much for your comments. We really appreciate you taking the time to share that with us tonight. For those of you in attendance, I gave her a little extra time because I couldn't. I really couldn't. I was struggling to understand what she was saying. So just please be mindful of that. I'm not trying to go against our own rules. I just want to make sure that the concerns are heard and that we can address those concerns because that's why we're here. All right. Anybody else in attendance that would like to come forward? Come on up. Good evening and welcome.
Yes. Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to speak. I'm Richard Shannon. I live on Nancy Circle in Argala Estates. And so my concerns with this, I guess I'll call them the three Cs. So that's the, actually not three Cs, but let me just say it's the two Qs and a C. It's quantity, quality, and then connectivity. So on quantity, it's just, I know they came here before. But even with this revised plan, it's too many units. And all of them, all being townhomes, I would be more supportive of a mix of townhomes and single-family. In terms of the quality, I see a lot of garage-fronted units. So you could have a sidewalk, but if you just have a row of garages aesthetically, it's not really good. I'd rather see something that had townhomes that were raised with stoops, with alley in the back for a garage. Have it be a place where neighboring communities or neighbors that live by would want to walk through and enjoy the property. In terms of connectivity and to actually counter the gentleman that was just here, I think the connection to Woodruff would be beneficial. I think the problem with developments in Smyrna is that a lot of them will just dead-end. And it would be better for traffic if there were actually three entrances and exits rather than just two. I think that would be a benefit to the development. I mean, I'll see if this was 75 units and it was split with townhomes and single-family. Not to mention the impact to schools. No one's talked about that. And our schools are overcrowded and growing. So there's been no mention of that and that should be addressed or acknowledged in some way, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shannon. Really appreciate you coming out, sir. Sorry. All right. As we give Mr. Staub's a moment to wipe down the podium, we'll see if anybody else would like to come forward. Welcome back.
Hi, Maggie Shannon. Just wanted to back up though, it's my husband, Richard Shannon, and we live in Argala Estates. And though we're an older neighborhood, we don't have a homeowners association. We have not heard from the developer at all. He has not come to talk to us about traffic. And all of us go out onto Campbell Road. We need to leave through going onto Atlanta or into Spring Road. And the amount of traffic during rush hour is unbelievable. And how much, I mean, you're there for 10, 15 minutes at the stoplight. And then the other concern I have, which we all already know with traffic, is, like my husband said, our schools, Argala Elementary is under capacity. Campbell Middle School is way over capacity. We're over by 350 students. We have 1,700 students there for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We will have a new middle school soon. They're taking 400 of our students. That only leaves 50 seats available. Those are going to go fast. We have 150 townhouses going here. There's supposedly going to be another 10 to 11 townhouses across the street from Campbell Middle School. I've also heard word that somebody wants to do townhouses on the property across from Campbell Middle School on Atlanta Road and Campbell Road. I understand townhouses. I get, you know, I get it. I know development's going to happen, but this developer has not reached out to our schools. I haven't heard anything on how he's going to work with us to help lessen the burden that's happening. I haven't heard him come to our neighborhood, Argala Estates, and talk to us about what we need. He needs to communicate with all of us and show that he has a concern. I have heard from the grapevine so many different things going on with this. Yes, he's redone it six or seven times. Well, you know what? That's because he wants his land. He's going to make money for it. I get City of Smyrna wants it. It's more revenue for us. But we've got to think beyond just 151 townhouses and the impact on the greater infrastructure and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. And be careful what you hear in that grapevine. It's not always the most reliable thing.
That is why I'd really like the developer coming to speak with us.
Absolutely. Then, and just not to defend the developer, but when there's no HOA, it makes it difficult. But yeah, I'm sure he hears you loud and clear. Come on up. Remember I've, in COVID times, I've removed the requirement to raise your hand and come forward. You just got to start walking. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. My name is Brad Coyle and I am the president of the association at the Park at Poplar Creek, which is in the Oakley Downs subdivision off of Campbell Road. And I've been the president for 16 years. I've seen, you know, I can speak to this from an association standpoint. We have 64 townhomes on about 20 acres. Probably voice the same things that you guys have been hearing forever. So it's obviously the traffic is an issue. The traffic's been an issue. I've been there for 22 years. So we know it's a big issue because of the cut-through specifically. Obviously, adding another entrance off of Campbell in a very congested area, I know, you know, it's great what the guys are going to try to do, but take this into account. There's going to be big, a lot of construction, a lot of big trucks, moving vans, all kinds of things coming down that road. And as you guys all know, right there, I'm sure right at that bend where the gas station is, the obviously Nam Day Moon, the shopping center, and obviously Spring Road, and trying to get onto Spring Road, that's a big issue. Do I think it's too many townhomes? As some of the other residents are saying, I'm like, maybe. It's probably 225 cars. It's one and a half times, somewhere in that range. So it's more of just, this is not an easy decision, I'm sure, for you guys. But, you know, I think you just got to take into account that if anything's going to have to happen there, it's going to have to be for the schools, obviously, as the other people were saying, and obviously for things like the infrastructure there and being able to get in and out of there because it's just getting harder and harder to get in and out of that, onto Spring Road. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. It's much appreciated. Come on. Better move quick. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. What's that?
If I don't talk about traffic, can I talk longer?
Well, we appreciate you not talking about traffic. It makes me sick every time I hear it.
Okay. Good evening, council members. I know city staff has done a lot on this project, but we're not there yet.
All right. Before you get started, I got to have...
I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. Don't be sorry. Don't be sorry. You just, I know it's, you want to get right to your notes.
I'm Virginia Sohatsky. I live in Vinings Point.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Right. Again, I do want to acknowledge that the city staff has done a lot on this project, but we're not there yet. Two years ago, when Cobb County planners analyzed the applicant's townhome plan, their staff report denied recommendation because the plan was too intense. Their planners also said the change to high-density residential zoning was incompatible with the land use category. The land use is Community Activity Center and they said it's meant to promote, quote, "the development of low-to-mid-rise office and retail uses." So how does RM10PD conform to the CAC of Future Use Land Use? Smyrna's 2040 Comprehensive Plan further stipulates that more intense uses within Community Activity Center, quote, "should be focused away from existing residential development." This does not. Next, there's a claim that over half million square feet of office space is the alternative to townhomes. How is this when the future land use is meant for small business buildings that support adjacent communities? Variances include exceeding the zoning's 35-foot height limit and shredding the setback requirements. That doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. And it doesn't make sense when the LCI study says to decrease intensity away from Cobb Parkway in a tiered fashion. Their model shows that the intensity of Sports Avenue was not intended at Campbell Road. I'm concerned about labeling it an Article 10 Plan Development when it doesn't follow most of the plan development requirements. There's only four requirements, and in my opinion, this plan fails to meet three of them. Reading from Section 1008, "The first requirement is that the plan development shall be compatible with the topography of the land and shall preserve any unusual topographic or natural features." This is the steepest place on one of the tallest ridges on Spring Road, and it's not being preserved at all. The city labeled the ridge as having a 10% to 15% slope. Steep slopes are a protected natural feature, and 50 homes will be built straight into it. The large-scale cut-in full process on the back slope will erode and destroy the hill profile. The second requirement is that the development shall not adversely affect developed or undeveloped neighboring properties. We continue to assert that the high-density land use will adversely affect the bordering low-density homes. The third requirement for plan developments is that it shall utilize design and development features that would not be possible by the application of lot-by-lot zoning district regulations. This one really highlights the fact that residential plan developments are intended to combine different types of projects together, like townhomes and detached houses. This site plan is all the same. Not only does it lack the required special design feature, it doesn't even need lot-by-lot zoning to begin with. It's my understanding that plan developments are reserved to make it less complicated for putting together different land uses on a large piece of land or to cluster development on one side of the land in order to protect environment on the other. But this is just a normal plan and it encroaches on the creek protection and the townhomes stretch from end to end on the same steep slope they should be protecting. And even though it may not meet the requirements, the staff memo cites that plan development standards, they cite plan development standards to dictate things like the landscape buffer. I'm so close. It paraphrased, it paraphrased Section 1013.3 from Residential Group Projects saying that the ordinance requires a 10-foot landscape buffer between the subject property and all external property boundaries. But it doesn't say that. The ordinance says a minimum 10-foot buffer shall be provided adjacent to, quote, "every exterior project property line." Exterior project property line. Well, what's that? Since a true plan development would have a multiple, would have multiple clusters of projects, different building types, land uses, sharing the same land, it makes sense that at least 10 feet be left between those projects. But in our case, there's just one project, townhomes. And since that's not what plan developments were meant for, it's confusing when they mention project property lines. Further down the same section, a distinction between projects and zoning districts are referenced again, saying building heights shall not exceed the limits permitted in the district in which the project's located.
Okay, Virginia. Real quick, real quick, real quick.
So, which brings me to say that project property lines are not the same thing as district lines. And we all know that Section 801 sets the landscape buffer between residential districts. It's 75 feet between us and them. And I can stop there and I...
So if you had, if you had to put it on one chief concern?
Sure.
What would it be?
The density is too intense without consideration of the Vinings Point, which has the longest border and that they're building into the ridge with which they should be protecting. 75 feet is a standard. It's so normal. It goes back so far. And to say that 20 feet is good enough between RM10 and us is not, is not right.
Thank you very much.
Looks at the impact at key intersections for this development in isolation. It assumes some modest traffic growth of about three percent until the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and just one percent in subsequent years. I'll note that the Sports Avenue project, when that traffic study was done there, I believe they estimated thirty-four thousand trips per day on Spring Road. The most recent traffic study, I believe, estimates over forty thousand. That's far in excess of three percent growth. So these different projects could add an additional five thousand trips on Spring Road. This is not to mention the two-hundred-room hotel that was approved on Spring Hill Parkway within the last year and a half. And it's my understanding that there's some consideration for another large high-density development at the old HH Greggs site. All of those projects funnel into one intersection, and that's Spring Road and Cumberland. It's the most problematic in the city and probably the most problematic in the county. Traffic studies give the Spring and Cumberland intersection during peak hours a grade of F, with nearly three times the level deemed unacceptable. Now, they talk about adding a, doing some traffic light stuff, changes to that intersection that would reduce the wait times by sixty percent. I'm a little bit skeptical on that. But bottom line, it doesn't meet the review factor number forty. When you look at these projects in total, we're gonna have, continue to have a significant problem, and it's only gonna get dramatically worse. Finally, it doesn't meet the zoning review factor number five, which states that the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use. In previous documents, the applicant themselves even acknowledged a future land use change of high density. I would reference you again to Ken Sudra's letter of April twenty eighteen, which states, quote, "The proposed density for the development is in direct conflict with the comprehensive plans for the city." And this was a project very similar to what we've ended up with here. In summary, because the project does not conform and meet the intent of planning review factors one, four, and five, I'm asking you that you keep the Spring Road corridor livable for those of us that use it every day and those of us that live in wards one, two, and three, and vote to deny this application as you did earlier this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. By. It's always a pleasure to see you, sir. Anybody else? Make sure you use plenty of lotion, Joey. Keep cleaning that thing. Your hands are gonna be dry. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jenny Shover. I live in Vinings Point. I don't know that I have a lot more to add from what my fellow residents have already stated, but I wanted to make sure you knew that there was one more person in attendance who's opposed to this. I'm not gonna belabor you with more talk about the traffic. I do wonder how long the construction project is scheduled to last, because with these proposed changes to the roadway and the construction, what's already a nightmare will be a nightmare of extraordinary order during construction. And I feel a little bit like, I mean, I, I've not been to these meetings before, except in relation to this project, but it feels a little round peg in a square hole to have that many variances and that many requirements, thirty-some-odd requirements. So I would ask us to just think about that. Seems, like I said, round peg in a square hole, trying to make something fit that doesn't. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you'll vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, come on. I've already missed the Santa pictures with my kids, guys. It's okay. I'm here for the, I'm here for the long haul now. No, no worries.
So, pretty much, oh, well, I'll start. My name is James Nunnely. I live in Vinings Point off of Drewsbury Court. So my lot actually backs up to this particular property. I spoke to you guys back in July when you all overturned this particular application. I would request that you do the same thing again. Just like she said, I'm not gonna run you through the same things as far as traffic and just the density. And I've really liked the square peg in a round hole. That seems to make a great deal of sense. I guess my biggest thing as far as traffic is concerned is the widening of the road, especially in that curve that we're at. There is not a great deal of space, and talking about widening it another two lanes doesn't seem like it fits that close to the end where we hit to the intersection. There's already a great deal of traffic adding in a concrete buffer there to continue to, or to keep people, from what I understand, turning left to the spring light. I don't think that's enough. I would just be remiss if I showed up and I didn't, I guess, express my dissension toward this particular project, and I trust that you guys will make the right decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming out. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna go ahead and close the public comment part of the hearing. I do want to give the applicant the opportunity to come back up and and answer some of the concerns that were brought up. Why can't he? I just told him he could, so he can. Sorry, Earl. So, Mr. Moore, we heard a lot of, a lot of concerns. I mean, we know that traffic's, traffic's an issue. We understand that. We all live with it. I've been here my entire life. So specifically, some of the issues associated with the, I'm not real, I'm not real sure that, maybe I don't understand it based on the picture, but if I look at the, not this screen here, can you go to the one that shows the elevation change between Vinings Point and that? If I understand this correctly, these buildings are not going to protrude up above the tree line of what is there and what you are going to be, what the developer's planning to put there. Okay, so the other question or concern is the proximity to the property boundary. You guys are doubling the distance of that vegetative buffer that is currently exists in the subdivision on that side. So they had a ten-foot buffer. You guys are putting a twenty-foot buffer. The, and the buildings are actually built into the hill to help screen the neighbors behind. Is that, is that correct? Because I'm hearing a lot of this, you know, proximity to the property boundary. I'm gonna be looking at a wall, a thousand linear feet of, of buildings. So can you speak to that, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And you do have it correctly, Mr. Chairman. If you, the, the cross-section that you're looking at now on your screen, to the left-hand side of that screen is Vinings Point. So you see the, the red line is essentially the, that's the property line. To the left of that red line is a, to the left, on the left side, is a ten-foot, already-existing heavily landscaped buffer, tree buffer, that's along that entire boundary. That ten feet is owned, actually, and maintained by the HOA as a planted buffer. That's kind of, as the topography is, where that is is kind of top of the small ridge for that side. And then the ridge falls, as it falls towards the stream on our property. And so what we're doing is then we're gonna plant along the top for twenty feet and have a heavily landscaped planted buffer of trees for twenty feet in width. That allows us to do a double row of trees along that. And then the property's falling, and instead of cutting into the hill, what we're doing is building into that topography. We're not cutting it and putting walls and things like that. We're building into that topography so that you've got the two-story side of the townhome building, if you will, is to their side. And so that the taller portion of that townhome building is actually to the lower interior side of our proposed development. So that what that does is actually minimize the height. And by utilizing the slope, we've minimized the height so that what really happens is, is where they're sitting and where, where it'll be built in, kind of the top of that ridge and where that is and where those trees will be planted, allows us to build in, so we're not building over the canopy. And so that we've really tried to maintain their visual integrity and minimize any potential impact by doing it this way. And I would propose that where a lot of this property is with the existing zoning, please understand that under NRC and O and I in Cobb County, it's a fifty-foot height, maximum height, four stories that can be built along this very same property line with minimal buffers that would be required in that, in that instance. So I, I just think it's important that we look at the actual comparison here. And I understand the concern about the height, but we're limited to thirty-five feet in height. We've proposed this as part of our package that creates only two stories adjacent to the town, to Vinings Point, and that's all been done intentionally.
Any other items on here? Do you guys wanna kick anything back to Mr. Moore that was brought up in the public comment section? Mr. Bartlett, you got anything you wanna add?
My understanding is information was requested, and this is more for Mr. Martin, information was requested for schools from Cobb County? Nothing, no impact studies were provided. We haven't heard back.
Go ahead. Yes. If you mind, I'd like to interject some, some color and context there. Early on, in fact, in early January of last year, we met with the school board, with their representatives, went to the school board's office, went to the school district's office to meet with their top planning people, to meet with them, number one, because Argyle Elementary is right there. We wanted to meet with them. They were a joining owner and wanted to meet with them and discuss, you know, if they had any concerns. Frankly, we're also discussing how we might be able to potentially, you know, look, look at points of access or some other alternatives with them, as well as discuss with them potential school impacts. The two biggest takeaways for us are that they don't have any current plans for Argyle Elementary, number one. Number two, they were not concerned with the school impact of our proposal at that time. So, and continued that. They, they have not made any comments since then, and they said, "We wish you well on this project. It looks like it'd be a great project for Smyrna." They loved the idea it was gonna be homeownership and not rentals, to be honest with you, because that's what they look for as far as being school impact. That's what they said at that time, and I haven't heard anything different.
But nothing from Campbell Middle or Cobb County in relation to Campbell and Campbell High?
No, nothing from them specifically, other than we met with the actual folks with the school district office. Also note that Cobb County had an opportunity and issued a letter of non-objection to this application. That was the prior application. We had double the density. Issued a letter of non-objection, understanding that that letter is first generated by the Board of Commissioners. Also, their staffs, including the schools, have an opportunity to interject at that point, too, and they did, offered no further objection or comment at that time.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Moore or anybody representing the applicant? Mr. Martin?
To address, uh, uh, Board Member Bartlett's comments with respect to our processes, when we get a rezoning application that exceeds seventy-five dwelling units, we, well, our policy is we send them all, we send the school board all our zoning requests. So when we send the email to the PNZ board, the planning, the planner for Cobb County also receives that application. Sometimes we get a letter back that says, "These are the enrollment impacts of the development on our enrollment numbers." Sometimes we don't. And this, at this point, we didn't get anything for this one. But, yeah, Mr. Moore was probably dealing with Mr. Dennis Campbell with Cobb County. He's the person that handles all their planning over there.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? I do, if you wanna, Rusty, you might, actually, you may wanna just stay there. I got a couple of questions for you. There's been a lot said about, two years ago, two thousand eighteen, and the letter from Mr. Sudra. I do believe you were still working as planner dose, right? Senior planner, I'm sorry. My apologies. Senior planner, now planning director. Can you, can you take us through the objections that, that he presented and how that would impact what we're talking about today?
I don't have the letter in front of me, so I can't go point by point with respect to the issues. I just know from a general standpoint, when there's a rezoning within a quarter, or I'm sorry, a half mile of the city of Smyrna Limits within Cobb County, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the county that they would notify us about that rezoning, just like we notify them about annexations and rezonings when they occur. And then within our intergovernmental agreement, we have the ability to object or support the request and, and work out any differences that, that come forward. But that, that request establishes a tight timeline of when we receive the notification, when we have to turn around our objection if, if we want to do that. So, yes, we get the request from the county. It's basically just their zoning application with the request. So we're looking at stuff on a scale of eight and a half by eleven for a development decide. You can hardly read anything. There wasn't any elevations provided with the, with the development. We didn't know what the impacts were to the stream. We didn't know what the impacts were to the buffer. And then, obviously, the LCI study, they did not provide the road connection that we were looking for in our LCI to create the connection from Campbell Road to Campbell, or to Cumberland Boulevard. So we put that letter together. We talked to mayor and council about it, and then we sent it, sent it to them. This is obviously, you know, back then, it was two hundred and eighteen, two hundred and twenty units, so it's around ten units per acre. Now it's down to, you know, six point five units per acre, more or less. So it, you know, it's a significant reduction. So, as, you know, as information comes in, we understand what the buffers are in relationship to the joining properties and what those impacts to the stream are, then there's an opportunity to revisit our position on it and, and make a new position based on the information that we have. In addition, we also wanted to have control over the access to Campbell and Spring Road and not allow the county to dictate what goes on there as far as, you know, what the, what those access points would look like. And, you know, it's, it's a piece of property that's surrounded by, by its city. It impacts the city. We wanted to have the ability to control what, what was happening there.
Okay. All right. Another question. Standard stipulations associated with rezoning. There's a number, right, that we go through every rezoning?
Right.
What's that number, the standard stipulations?
There are seventeen standard stipulations in section twelve oh one. So when you run into a development that may have some variances, we bump that into a conditional development. And in this one, in this case, it's also a planned development. It's trying to meet Plan Development standards. So we, at that point, when it becomes a conditional development, it has several variances. We tie it to the site plans, to the site, site plan submitted. What we try to do with the, with the stipulations is tie the developer or the applicant to the plan that's submitted. So, you know, we may have thirty-four conditions on there. You know, probably this one had fifteen conditions. We're from the standard conditions, and we added additional ones. And those are just basically, as you saw, we were calling out what the setbacks were, the building separation, the driveway lengths, the requirements for- the building separation, the driveway lengths, the requirements for sidewalk, and then, you know, requiring what the fire marshal wants, the city engineer, making sure we have the ability when we get to the full engineering of the project that we have the latitude to make the changes that we need. You know, what, what we've seen is when we get, if we don't include those requirements, we get to full engineering, and there, then there's a question between things, and it, it becomes difficult for staff. So, we try to call all those out on the front end, so the applicant understands what are, are, what we're expecting, and it's clear on the table of what, what we wanna see when they submit for permitting.
Would it be fair to say that, that the stipulations are both restrictive on the applicant, and there's a give and take? There's, you know, giving them benefits to, I don't wanna say benefits, but giving them a little bit more flexibility inside the stipulations? Is that fair? That it's both?
Yeah. I mean, the zoning ordinance has a set standard of requirements. The zoning ordinance also provides for the ability for variances. So, when you take into account site constraints and everything that else that goes on with respect to, you know, the development of the property, you have to consider all those items together. And sometimes, the requirements of the zo, of the zoning don't align to practices, you know, development practices today, or, you know, just what the market requires today. So, we, you know, we look at that stuff, we try to make sure that everyone's protected and try to, to, to have a plan that meets the intent of what the ordinance is requiring as close as possible.
Okay. And then, one more final thing from you, Mr. Moore. This, there has been very little, I mean, a little bit of talk about it, but not a whole, a whole, a whole bunch of talk about this park. Can you talk about the amenities, the size, that kind of thing, of what you guys are planning with this park?
Sure. And I'll talk to both, because there are, there is a full amenity here for this, for this community. We've, that previously had been located adjacent to Vinings Point. That's where that had been designed to go in the prior plan. That's now moved to, up really behind the gas station type area, moved up front and away from Vinings Point, as, and that's our active amenity area. As it relates to the open space park area, there is a stream which now is protected. What we are doing with that other area of land that's there as well, that's not within the stream, all of that will be preserved open space. We're gonna, but, when I say develop it for trails, I really should say install the types of walking trails that you can do to make it a true passive open space park for, you know, the enjoyment of these residents, and it'll actually be available for the enjoyment of the Woodruff Drive residents as well, because they'll be able to connect across the pedestrian bridge. And that, what that does is create true preservation in an open space passive park. You don't have the walking trails and, you know, little passive benches and those types of things for people to, to enjoy throughout that area. And there are also a number of pocket parks throughout the, the site design as well to enhance that livability and quality.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Appreciate your, your diligence-
Thank you.
-and your responses. All right. Before we entertain a motion, is there anybody, any other further comments from the board?
I do have just one more thing for Mr. Martin. And I appreciate the Chairman Powell bringing up, and y'all having the back and forth on the, the site plans, the give and take of the variances. You know, these, this plan is pretty well set. You have an excellent engineer, the architecture is pretty much done. I don't see much variation that can take place in the engineering of these units and these layouts, and for us to allow a two-time, two and a half times discrepancy in a setback from a, giving them twenty, but them not showing a twenty, but allowing, instead of just showing fifty feet, I'm just, I'm kinda struggling, you know, but, and also the engineering off-site, I'm really, really struggling with, too. And it's way ahead of time, and it's, it's stuff that hasn't been hashed out fully, but I just don't see the success of this plan going forward without some of those engineering items being figured out. And, and I'm talking Shell Station, Namde Moon, circulation around that. I drive, I mean, I live, I live in Argyle, okay? There's buses that stop at, outside the Little Caesars. I mean, there's things that have to be figured out for this project to be successful, and I just don't know that it's been vetted enough, because it's, it's not in our nature, in cities' nature, to vet it at this point in time. But I would struggle with approving a project of this nature on this property that's the last property on si, on, on, on Campbell, or not Campbell, Spring, of this size. I don't know the answers, and I don't know if we can even discuss it yet, but that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Anybody else? Gonna jump over to Mr. Jones? Do you have any further comments? Somebody wake up Mr. Jones? All right, how about Mr. Bentley?
Sorry.
No.
I, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Neither do I.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. All right. Before we entertain a motion, I wanna make a couple of comments. One, I'd like to applaud everybody in attendance except Mr. By. He's, he's too practiced at this. No, I'm joking. You guys, this is what I love about Smyrna. These are tough, tough issues. Hopefully, you feel like you had an opportunity to get your voice heard. I don't know how this vote's gonna go. I never do. But, the, the point of us doing this exercise is so that you can get your voice heard, and so that we can present as fair an opportunity for developers that come into our community and invest in our community to hopefully make it a better place, right? That's the whole goal in what we're doing here. So, I applaud all of you. Very professional Virginia. I'm sorry I cut you off, but I, that three-ring binder scared the hell out of me. So, but, but well done to all of you guys. And, and to the developers, this is, not, you know, we have 2020, dear God, you know, like, what else we gonna do? But, you guys, you keep reinventing this plan, reinventing this plan. You guys know firsthand that I'm not a, I'm not a big town home fan, but what scares me is that, is, this could be worse. This is county land. It's not annexed into the city. These, these little pockets, you guys don't know me, but over the, the last several years of my life, every time I can buy a piece of property that's close to the city, I'll try to buy it and annex it into the city, because I think it's important that, that Smyrna has more control of the dirt around us. And there's, there's a tremendous amount of these little pockets, believe it or not. I, I think it's important for the city to be able to have input on the traffic at Campbell Road. I, I think that the, the volume of, of cars that Mr. By alluded to earlier, I, I can't imagine it's not impacted by all the work that's going on, on Wendy Hill. And the fact that, that everybody's shifting their traffic patterns there because they don't wanna go through the war zone that is that stretch of Wendy Hill from South Cobb Drive to Atlanta Road. I know I avoid it like the plague, and I live, work, and play in this town and have for the last fifteen years every day. So, I can't imagine that those improvements are going to not have a positive impact on Spring Road. The one question I do have, and forgive me, Mr. Moore, this is the last question. Do you guys, somebody asked, construction timeline, how long are we talking for a construction timeline of a development of this magnitude?
Probably from development, initial development through build-out, probably two and a half, three years.
Two and a half, three years.
I mean, they'd love it to be shorter.
Of course, we all would, but until we figure out how to, how to work during rainy days, that's, anyway, thank you very much.
Sure.
That's my piece. The, I'm not, I'm not particularly in love with townhomes, but we need to selectively go with the development that is, that we can have some, some input in, some control of. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny zoning request Z nineteen dash zero one nine, rezoning from NRC, ONI to RM ten PD for development of one hundred and fifty-one townhomes.
Mr. Bartlett's motion to deny? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Smith's second? Please vote. Mr. Jones?
I-
We have a, we have a motion to deny and a second.
Uh, yes, I-
Okay, and that is in the affirmative to deny. And Mr. Bentley?
I vote nay.
So, you're in opposition to the vote to deny?
Correct.
Okay. So, the application is denied if I count six, one. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming out. Really appreciate it. The application, good luck to you guys. Hey, before you guys start taking off, real quick, I just want to, before we approve the, the minutes from the last meeting, a couple of different things. One, I really appreciate, I was out, I was absent last, last week, or last month. Mr. Bartlett stepped in, blindsided, and ran a fantastic meeting. Thank you for that, sir. And one other thing, and for those of you on the board that haven't heard this yet, I apologize for bringing it up like this, but a former board member, Leslie Lightfoot, recently passed away. Yeah, and I would, I'd feel terrible not saying what a sweet, loving, and kind woman Ms. Lightfoot was, and she will be sorely missed. So, with that, I would like to get a motion to approve the minutes from the November nine, 2020 meeting. Motion to approve, Mr. Rice. I gotta get him in there, man. And a second, Mr. Seagrace. All in favor of the minutes as presented? Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Bentley's in favor.
And, and Mr. Jones?
I'm in favor.
Thank you both. The minutes are approved, seven, zero. This meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six in the PM. Thank you all.